Good evening, everyone. It is 6:00 PM. I'm going to call this city council meeting to order. Today is July 12th. Will you stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance with me, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a quick roll. So, Councilman Owen.
Good.
And Councilman McGoffin is not here. Councilwoman Diamond.
Present.
Councilman Burns.
Present.
Councilman Kestie.
Present.
Councilman Allen.
Present.
And Councilman Lavaca has asked to be excused tonight, so...
Mayor Johnson, I just got a text as well from Councilmember McGoffin that he's just running late. He should be here momentarily.
Perfect. Thank you. We'll expect him shortly then. All right, moving into the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second that, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. So, we have a motion by Councilman Owen, seconded by Councilman Allen to approve the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. All right, moving into the consent agenda. Items one through four. Do we have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'll second.
Well, we had a motion by Councilman Burns, seconded by Councilman Owen. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opponents say aye.
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 Do we have one opposed? Okay, just came in late. All right. Right now, we have introduction of a special guest. We are going to have Helping Hands Food Bank Street Outreach Specialist Lisa. And Lisa, I'm going to have Lisa share her last name, so I don't...
I don't know how to say it.
Miawski.
I didn't want to embarrass me or you by saying it, so thank you for sharing it.
No problem. So, I'm going to start. Thank you for having us tonight. I'm going to start out kind of presenting the project that we're working on, and then Lisa's going to talk a little bit about some of our experiences and then answer any questions that you guys might have. So, the overall project, we're calling it the SOS, and it's a Street Outreach Specialist, and that is basically her title. It came from a conversation with Janicki Industries about wanting to support outreach here in Seager Woolley that really gets to the grassroots of why people are unhoused. So, when you see people either walking on the streets or by food pavilion or by the library, she's got some extra special training that kind of allows her to have a different perspective on what they might be going through. So, and John really talked to us about, there was a lot of times that someone might be sleeping on a bench in front of their facility, and he didn't want to just chew them off, but actually, you know, what are the needs that they have? And he didn't really have an outlet to, you know, figure out what the needs they had. A lot of times, they would just get up and leave without, even though he wanted to help. So, they came up to us and said, would you, he's also on the, chairman of my board, and also, I wanted to congratulate Councilmember Burns is now on my Board of Directors. Thank you for volunteering and serving in that capacity with us. And he asked me if we would, Lisa was an intern at the time, if we had a staff person that could really get to answer some of the questions that they had internally within the Janicki family about how they could support on a different level than just handing somebody $5 and having them get some food or things like that. So, we came up with this project. If you want to go to the next slide, unless I have to do it. Okay. So, the project is a three-year partnership between Helping Hands and Janicki Industries. They basically pay her salary, and when she needs to get people propane, or tents, or food, or vet bills, or things like that, that there's a stipend inside the grant that she can use to support people that need a few things. Maybe they just need gas to get to Mount Vernon and go get their services, or to the Vet Connect Center, or whatever it is that they might need. And then, if there's any larger items, we just are allowed to ask. There was a person parked on, at Cook Road exit that had broken down, and they were getting ready to tow. That was his house. And they paid for, we got the tow paid for, and then the grant paid for the RV to get fixed finally. And so, those are, and so that that person didn't lose their home. That was the only home that they had. So, that was a great partnership between a grant that we had, them, and Helping Hands together. So, the focus of the project is to really find the root causes of why people are unhoused. You probably have a laundry list of reasons why you think people are unhoused. It could be drugs, it could be mental illness, but when you really get down to why each person is unhoused, there are way more things than you would ever imagine that got them to where they are today. And sometimes, there's some quick things to get them out of being unhoused. There was a couple people that you'll see that have been, are not, no longer unhoused, and it was a pretty quick timeline between when we first met them and now they're more stable. Obviously, the project overview, this is Lisa. She's our staff member at Helping Hands, and funding comes from Janicki Industries, and then it also comes from in-kind donations. We do a lot of asks. When someone needs a tent, we'll ask, and we find them for free because someone has extra in their garage, and then other partners that we have. Some of the goals for this program is to start by building the relationships between the businesses and the community here in Seager Woolley. So, when there is an issue, and it's a safe issue, it's not a police issue, it's just, there is a gentleman at the library who looks like he could use some water, and Lisa's there. She knows who he is. He can, she can bring him the things that he needs, offer a shower, offer some food, or whatever, in a conversation of, you know, how do we support you better than calling the cops? And we know, a lot of times, she's been trained on what to look for for safety reasons, and how to approach people, and where to not push, and so. We try to be as safe as we can. Build relationship with those who are unhoused. So, the one thing that, the biggest point of this project is John wanted her to make a personal relationship with each one of these individuals, so that they can really understand, like, why that person is in the way they are. Connecting with partnerships, you will, I'll show you the long list of partnerships that we have later, and find the root causes of why people are unhoused, and explore solutions to those root causes, because as you know, it isn't just about building a house and putting someone in there. We've seen people moving into places like Martha's Place, but they've been unhoused for so long that they don't even know how to be inside anymore. And so, not just getting them in housing, but like, work with them to find other things that they need to work on as well. So, here's a couple highlights. This has only been going on since January. She has served 52 individuals, and she's working with most of them currently. Of 30 of those people are residents of Seager Woolley, which kind of blows my mind, because I remember, I don't even know what year it was. I've been at Helping Hands for eight and a half years, and I remember Chief Tucker going, "I know of two unhoused people in Seager Woolley." And so, when she gave me that number, I said, "How many people identify as, like, from Seager Woolley?" And she said, "30." I was like, "Whoa." Eleven of those services have been complete, and hundreds of resources have been referrals to for veteran services, and our senior programs, and food, and the list of referral is, to include Family Promise, is just, it's amazing how many referrals these folks get. And then, we have formed some new partnerships as well. So, one of the stories that we have is, we got a phone call from a business. They had an individual, is this the right one? No. This was, this came from the Janickis. There was a lady who was a friend of a friend. She was an elderly woman, and she was considered unhoused. She had no stable housing. She was just kind of crashing on people's couches, and working through a lot of her services and what she qualified for, and she's on a bunch of housing lists, but we ran again, we ran up against a senior that was potentially going to lose their house due to, her husband died. And so, Lisa was able to introduce the two of them, and they are now roommates, and they're house sharing. So, the one that was unhoused could pay a little bit, and it was just enough to have the other one have enough to stay in her home, and now they're connected in a house sharing together. And they're sharing different, the one of them had surgeries, so the other one was helping her out, and it's just a really great partnership between the two ladies who could be long-life friends, and they're helping each other out at the same time. So, this one is family, and they were camping, you know. This had three children in them, camping in a tent. And basically, the long story short is, as we found, she basically found them in the woods, and no one really knew who they were, but they are now with Family Promise, and are now living in an apartment altogether. So, their children weren't taken away. They now are, have the services they need, and it's probably, they're still being worked with. Nothing's just a cut and dry, you're done. There's just all a lot of follow-up, and Lisa can talk more about, like, some of the follow-up that she does with these families. But thanks to Family Promise, who has great infrastructure to do that kind of work, we could not do this without the strong partners that we have. So, some of the partnerships that we work with is the Sheriff's Department. The need came from, I have a sister-in-law that works in the Sheriff's Department, and they actually have an outreach program team that is exhausted and stressed, stressed, because when our sheriffs go into a particular place that someone has called on, a lot of times, they find the criminal element, but then they find children. They find young pregnant women. They find the elderly living around that criminal element, and they never, they don't know what to do with it. So, we have partnered with them to go into these groups and really help support the people that are maybe being taken advantage of the criminal element, or don't know what to do, or don't know where to go, and it's been really successful. Obviously, Family Promises, Promise, the veteran services, we're really connected with the Skagit Vet Specialists, Inspire Churches, anything we need, they're there for us. The First Step Center, Mount Baker Presbyterian Outreach, the Shower Connection, private businesses, Heart to Heart, YMCA in the, in community outreach, and their outreach partners. It does really take a village to really get to the core of why people maybe don't feel like they're part of the community, and they need, then they're unhoused. So, some of the future plans that we have, so it's been six months, so the next six months will be growing the partnerships between the businesses. We just want to make sure that everybody feels like they can connect with the, with Lisa, or if she has a backup, when she's on vacation, there's a backup, to say, "We really see a need. Could you come check someone out?" And I think when John called one day, I was like, "Hey, Lisa, can you go over there?" She's like, "Well, I'm at the market. I'll just come now," and she was there within, like, a minute. So, it's easier around here. Building relationships with those people. She's going to start really focusing on those people that she's still working on, and really spending time with them, and really understanding who they are. Sharing the stories and need, like today, we want to start sharing the need and the stories and how we can help, and then grow those partnerships to support participants more fully. We did have access to a grant that our lovely grant writer wrote that will support even more people on East County, and we're talking about the seniors and the disabled, and people that are just super vulnerable. We have over 4,500 seniors that live, have Seager Woolley East County through the food bank, and we were kind of blown away by that number. I was like, "That's a lot of seniors that live from Seager Woolley, that, all the way up to Marble Mount." So, and then, that's who we serve at the food bank, and that really kind of surprised our numbers. So, I wanted to say thank you, because I know this started with the idea that they really wanted to support the city, Janickis, and I'm glad that we were given the opportunity to show how great a nonprofit, that this isn't any government funding, this is all private funding, and it's been kind of great to have that flexibility to just, "I need tires." Okay, here, here you go. And if those tires make that person be able to go to work and not unhoused, then, you know, what a great opportunity. So, I want to have Lisa come up, maybe tell her a couple outcomes that you've really appreciated, and then answer your questions.
So, some outcomes that I have seen, I guess, there's one gentleman walking across a parking lot when I was talking with the coworker, and he looked like he was really struggling. So, I just smiled and waved, and, you know, I don't like to approach someone assuming that they're unhoused, but, so I start with a smile and wave, and ask if they need anything. He's like, "Yep, I'm looking for food." So, we're closed, but I have my, the back of my car set up to, I'm prepared. So, when I'm somewhere, I have food, water. Sometimes, I'll have first aid, clothes, just the necessities. And so, he was able to shop through that, and so, as he was shopping, just kind of keeping his mind busy, I asked him, like, "What is your plan? Where are you going? Do you know what you're doing, and where'd you come from?" And he kind of filled in a little bit here and there, but he had no, he had no idea. So, it was the same night as the Shower Connections at the Inspire Church Clothing Closet. So, I just thought, "Well, let's just bring him there. He can get cleaned up. If you need some clothes, you can get some clothes," and kind of go, go from there. And I like that story a lot, because it was, like, he just kind of passed on by, and again, I didn't assume, but I asked, and he did need help. So, I was able to help him at least get situated for that night. Then, by the end of the night, there's no shelters. There's nowhere safe to park. So, I had to take him back to his broke-down truck at South Skagit, Skagit, what is that road? South Skagit Highway, yeah. So, I had to take him all the way back out there to sleep in his broke-down car, because there's no shelters in town, and the ones that are out of town are pretty full. So, I guess, it's not the best outcome, but it was, I was able to support him and partner with Shower Connections, and he was able to just at least have a time to get some fresh air and regain his marbles and go on from there. Some other outcomes is connecting families. When you're homeless, living on the streets, people don't know where you're at. So, there's been three separate individuals at three separate, different times, that I've just kind of, let's just say stumbled across these people, and one, for example, is a 21-year-old man, and I've been working with his mom for a while now, and one day, she told me, "You know, I haven't heard from my son in weeks. I don't know where he's at. He doesn't name. This is what he looks like. Please, if you find him, let me know." And a week later, he was on the benches. He was very in a rough, dark spot, but I'm like, "Dude, I know your mom. She's looking for you. Like, let's connect you guys." And he had already found her. Oh, he called her, but he hadn't gone up to see her yet. So, he went off again to find somewhere to sleep, because that's, that's the issue. There's no sleeping, there's no shelters, and no parking. But, so he figured it out for the night, but the next morning, he was there waiting for me and asked if I can take him up to be with his mom. So, that's just one example of reconnecting a family, and they're both suffering from homelessness. But, the goal is to kind of reconnect families, and they can help each other heal as well. And that's just one of the three. The other one is, is the gentleman actually living at the, staying at the library right now. He's from East County, and he's been missing for months since the cold weather shelter closed down. But, I've been working with him, and I connected with the outreach team at the church over there, and again, I was able to pass along the information to them, and they can tell his mom. And she, she cried with, with relief that he is safe, not safe to go back to the home, just because of some family things, but I don't know. So, those are, those are the things that I really see as a success, is connecting families, and just being able to support people in the stage that they're in right now.
Those are really impactful stories. Thank you for sharing those. Does anybody have any question for Lisa?
I'll ask you one question or two. Do you deal with drugs, people with drug problems?
Yes.
Are you a licensed counselor?
I am not a licensed counselor, no. But, I do have connections with different treatment programs in Mount Vernon that I can call them. The Detox Center is open 24 hours a day. I have studied for psychology, and ultimately, in 10 years, that's my goal, but I'm not there yet. So, I'm not a mental health professional, but I do have connections with those that are.
Okay. Thank you.
So, Lisa, something you might be interested in that I learned about today, and that is, in this past legislation, 2023 legislation, they passed a bill. There's millions in it. And they are putting people through school to acquire their counseling degrees, and they pay for the whole thing.
Really?
So, I think that's something maybe you might want to think about exploring, since you're already there and doing the work.
I would love that.
Yeah. So, just, and Representative Carolyn Eslet could probably give you more about it. If you, I know that Becky could put you in touch with her, but she's the one who got the bill passed.
That's amazing.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, I'd like to encourage you to do that.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, 52, that's a large caseload.
Yeah.
So, is that, it can't be every week? And what's that over?
Since the first. So, since the first of January to now, I have touched base with 52 individuals, 54 individuals. Each of them are in different areas. They have different backgrounds. They have different needs. So, I'm learning very slowly. I'm kind of a slow learner, but not everything is a dumpster fire. So, some stuff does have to be put on the back burner, and they have to figure certain things out on their own. Then, when they're ready for more help and resources, I'll be there. I tend to keep in touch with people mostly by texting, just so that it doesn't take long. Just do a simple check-in, again, depending on the person, but, so I'm not actively full-force working with that many individuals, but I do like to keep tabs, just to show that I'm still here and I still care. We do have laundry, shower, food, non-food, all kinds of stuff we can offer to people, on top of the partnering resources that we do have. So, yeah, it's, it is a lot of big caseload, but I'm, again, learning to kind of slow down and focus on what I can do right here and right now, and not worry about housing everybody, because that's, that's a long-term goal.
A lot of humanity that you're showing them. That's really lovely.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, yeah. I don't really have anything else. Does anybody have any questions? I really want to thank you all for coming and doing this. Becky, I remember when you and John met with us, and you were talking about, this is what you wanted to do, and as I recall, John Janicki said what he wanted to do was give them a name, not just a face in the crowd, but that they are human beings with needs. And it sounds like you're doing that, exactly that, Lisa. Thank you.
Yeah. Can I give you guys my flyers and business card?
Perfect.
Awesome. Yeah. So, one of the reasons why our ask is that you all take at least one of her card, put it in your wallet or your purse, and when you have someone that may be in your ward that comes and says, "Hey, we've got this person that's walking around. They're looking, they're not, it's not police activity, but please, give out her number. We want to make sure that we might know what's going on with them. We might be able to support, at least give you an idea of what's going on, if they're already in our program, or if they're brand-new to the, to Seager Woolley. Sometimes, people end up in Seager Woolley because they're being pushed out of Burlington or Mount Vernon. And so, just let us know, and it's great that you guys have an opportunity to contact her if your people need you to, need your help. So, that's what our ask is for tonight.
Well, I think that's very doable. Go ahead.
Actually, a question that came up to me over the weekend, that you might be able to help me with, is if you have or know of anyone who has formulated a list of resources in our area for people who are in need?
We do have one. We call it the Blue Book. Is that what we call it? It's easier for them to call the solutions team, because there's like 10,000 different resources. So, they can actually narrow it down to the, starting with the conversation of, are they a vet? Are they children? Are they senior? You start with the big categories, and you kind of whittle your way down. So, we don't mind if businesses have employees that need help, and we don't mind if it's someone they know that needs help, their neighbor that needs help. It's, it's, there are so many resources. It's a little dizzying when you see it all, but because of their expertise, they can narrow it down real fast to, here's the four things that, this is the best way to start. This is the best resource to start them with.
So, should I tell them to contact Lisa at that point, or?
Or Helping Hands, the solutions team.
Just the solutions team at Helping Hands? Okay. Thank you.
No, thank you. It's hard to carry a book. It's always outdated.
Well, I think it's really lovely that you're using those resources in the community. IC Church, Family Promise, which are having a huge impact on the community, not just, I'm not just talking about Seager Woolley. I'm talking about the county as a whole, changing lives. So...
And we, we go to a case manager meeting out at First Steps. Is it every Friday, or every other Friday?
Every other Friday.
Every other Friday, where all the caseworkers from the county get together and talk about needs and what's going on. And that's been a huge support for them, because a lot of times, we've got cross-city, oh, he's like, the one lady that's at Food Pavilion is now over in Mount Vernon, and keeping tabs on where people are through the case manager relationship. So, it's the only way to truly solve anything, is that that partner list should be 500 different partners, and that's how people get housed quickly and things done, is through knowing what services they qualify for.
Well, I'm sure I speak for everybody here when I say thank you so much for taking the time and the effort and the energy, and also to Mr. Janicki for investing his money in this, where we're coming up with real solutions rather than the shuffle game.
Our favorite part of it is that it can prove that business, private business, city, nonprofits can get together and really solve problems without the big, heavy taxpayer load. That was one of the, like, best goals for this project, for like us, was like, "Hey, this is cool that a business could step up for not a whole lot of money," and it really, like, 52 people for what they've spent so far is huge. That's a huge investment. So, but thank you. Thank you always for your support. And those that are on Zoom, thank you for your support.
Thank you, Becky. Good to see you all. Thank you. Okay, moving on to item G, City Administrator Report. Charlie?
Thank you, Mayor Johnson, members of the council. Good evening. Really quickly, this evening, just wanted to take a moment with council to make sure we're all on the same page going forward with the confirmation process for positions at the senior levels of the city. We're still out recruiting for the Community Development Director position, and at some point, we will look forward to bringing back a candidate to you for confirmation. I just wanted to take a moment to go through the part of the code that governs that. It's section, it's in the packet. It's section 2.02.020. It talks about the powers of the mayor, and it's a brief read. I'm going to give it to you real quick. "The mayor shall be the chief executive of the city, in charge of all departments and employees, with authority to designate assistants and department heads, officers and employees, and to enter into employment contracts with such individuals, and to appoint and remove members of various city boards and commissions, subject to the provisions of any applicable state law, ordinance, or regulation, including the classified civil service, and subject to confirmation by the council where required, in the case of any members of boards and commissions. Council confirmation shall be required for the appointment of all department heads." Council confirmation shall be required for the appointment of all department heads. In talking with the city attorney, really the city's got options in RCW for how to approach this scenario. Appointments can be entirely the mayor's and confirmation essentially all within the mayor's executive branch purview, or it could be split out the way we have it. But we can't go any further into finding the process than this. The mayor's job is to make, do the recruitment, make the appointment. The council's job as the legislative branch is to do the confirmation part of the process. That said, there is the ability for the mayor to decide to include the council in the, the process of recruiting and appointing. And the mayor has decided to do that going forward to have a couple of council members be a part of the process. So just wanted to provide that clarification with council, make sure we were all on the same page going forward. So there's no confusion and also let the council know that we are intending to include a couple of council members in the process. Up until this point, we did not realize there was any interest from the council. It's my understanding when initially the council started confirming people and the code had changed that there was really no interest by the council. I was not here at the time, so I can't speak to this directly, but that there was no interest from the council in being a part of the interview process. So now that we know there is interest from the council and being a part of the interview process, the mayor's decided to make that a reality. So we look forward to working with you on the next person that we bring forward.
Thank you, Charlie. Okay, moving on to council reports. Councilman Owen?
I have a few things to talk about and one is the Fourth of July fireworks. And they were just, they were, they were just terrible. I mean, they were shooting off stuff that I've heard in, back in the Korean War, you know? I mean, it, it rattled a lot of the neighbors. And I don't care how many ordinance you put out there, if you don't enforce them, they ain't worth a darn. And, and to enforce all of that, you'd have to call in the National Guard. And I understand that. The only thing you could do is do away with fireworks, ban them. And then start writing some tickets because it's, it's, it's a real problem to the public. I've had more complaints. And I went out in the morning and I picked up a plastic, looked like propellers off of big, big craft that went up. I don't know what they were, but, but it was all over my yard. And I worried about fire. Everything is so dry. And I've got a neighbor that his grass is about a foot tall and, and dry. And you get something like that started and it's going to be bad. So I only, the only thing I can say to do is just ban the things and, and start shooting them off, write some tickets and then maybe they'll get the message. I know you guys have your hands full, chief, but there's no way, no way you could have controlled that going on. It was completely out of control. I mean, it was everywhere. But I feel sympathetic towards, towards the neighbors and the people and, and myself, you know? You're just completely helpless. You can't do nothing about it, but we've got to start somewhere. And other than that, the parade was, was fantastic and I never seen so many people. I started out with my little kind of private place in my neighbor's yard and pretty soon I was almost squeezed out of my chair. But it was, it was good to see it turn out like that. And I, I really appreciated it and I appreciate whoever puts that parade on. They've done a fantastic job. And you, you police, you did a good job too. I don't think anything real bad happened. Fire department, I hope didn't have too much trouble. But anyway, we appreciate, appreciate you too. I hate to say that, but what can we do? You do a good job. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Owen. Councilman Burns?
Well, first I want to say, Councilman Owen, I'll pass on your gratitude to my fellow Lions. We're really happy to put on the parade and glad that it worked out so well this year. I'm grateful to everyone who volunteered to help make the Fourth of July festivities in our city possible. It takes a real team effort. If you see anybody in a neon yellow log rodeo shirt without the insignias on the back from the sponsors, they probably helped make it happen. So it was really great to see the turnout, see the log drive come back, car show that was going on, just, just wonderful to see the city come alive with that. And it's really a big part of our community and bringing people together. So I'm just deeply grateful for it. It's one of the things that made me fall in love with Cedar Woolley so much. So thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Burns. Councilman Allen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think the Fourth of July was spectacular this year as always. We probably had close to 100 people at our house and 55 were in-laws, outlaws and all that probably. And then my daughters and son-in-law's friends. You know, I thought everything was spectacular this year. And Chuck, I have to disagree. I can put up with fireworks for a day. You know, they're not fun. I know that. But anyway, it is just, it was neat. I went down to the carnival twice to get a steel claw hamburger. And there were so many people. I haven't seen the carnival that full for 25 years or more. And so I didn't stop off and enjoy it. But anyway, I thought the Fourth of July was totally successful. It's nice to see COVID kind of easing down and people actually smiling and watching the parade and being humans again. So anyway, that's all I got to say.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Allen. Councilman McGoffin?
Hi, thank you, Madam Mayor. Kind of want to echo what other people have been saying too, that I really appreciate the log of rodeo and the Lions and all the organizations that helped put on all the events. I thought it was really good turnout this year. I mean, the parking for the rodeo was like going down Highway 20, which I haven't seen in a long time. And I also wanted to give a shout out to the first responders and all the city staff too that put in a lot of hours. I know the city looked great and I think everyone had a great time. So that's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilman McGoffin. Councilwoman Diamond?
Pretty much the same here. Log of rodeo parade looked to be a great event. There were more people in this town than I have seen in the last 15 years. And so I think that that's fantastic that that's come back. And I sincerely appreciate and thank the police and fire in that, helping to orchestrate and keep everybody safe in there as well as our public works departments. They were working so hard to keep things nice and clean, cleaned up before and after. Unfortunately, at least down Ferry Street, from some of my constituents, they said it's the most garbage they've ever had left behind this year. I know that comes hand in hand with the more people that come in, but our park, our public works and the guys out there that, that come together and, and help to clean up our city have done an amazing job and, and put in that time to help clean up the streets again after that. And I sincerely thank them for that. It's with staff and the, the city employees there that, that helped to make this town beautiful and a great place to be and that's, that's greatly appreciated. Other than that, we have a couple Cedar Woolley Little League teams that are going to state. So I'd like to just congratulate and, and provide them with the, with support to represent our town here of Cedar Woolley at state going amongst every, everybody else that's bought their way to get there. It, supporting youth is incredibly important and hopefully they will want to come back and give back to the community as they grow and they can, they can remember and, and bring all of that stuff back. So all of that then goes hand in hand in, in regards to the city and community. And that's all I have today.
All right. Thank you. Councilwoman Kestie?
Thank you. I just want to invite everyone. The Cedar Woolley Rotary Club's summer concert series starts this Saturday from six to eight. So come down to Riverfront Park and enjoy all the festivities.
All right. Thank you. And I just, I guess, want to reiterate what everybody else has been saying. I know the Lager Rodeo Committee and the Lions Club, they do a lot of festivities, a lot, the pie eating contest, the kiddies parade, beard contest, all of that, with just a few people. There's just a few people in each of these clubs that are making this happen. So actually, it's an opportunity for those who may want to get involved in the community is checking in with the Lions Club, checking in with the Rotary, Lager Rodeo Club. The rodeo club has a great standing. They've got good people there. And I also want to thank Rotary for all the work that they did putting the foot race together. I know Becky, you put together the T-shirts and raised some really good money for Rotary. Thank you very much. I think that's the best we've ever done. So it's just, it does as, as, I think it was Joe who said it. It does take a community. It does take a village to make all these things come together. I too want to thank the fire and police. You guys worked overtime. Not that you don't already do that, but should I say overtime, overtime? You did overtime on your overtime. And also for Public Works because they stepped in too this time to really help out and protect people with the streets and, and kept cars from pulling into where the parade route was at. It was just a remarkable, remarkable event and started out big with Blast from the Past and, and you know, Fourth of July, and I'm just really looking forward to the fall events as well. So great community that we live in. And then somebody was asking me who the winners were of the carving contest. And so I actually went online to check it out and it was actually first place went to Mike Ayers and he had the lantern fish, if you saw that. It was absolutely amazing. The big fish with the scuba diver who was injuring the mouth. Second place went to Wade Lap. That was the mushroom characters. Third was Bob King, the bear family. Fourth was Ryan Anderson, the dinosaur. And fifth was to Nick Belby, which was the wolves. So all of those were great, great carvings and it was just a great show. All right, moving on now to public comment. I am going to open it up for public comment. But first, do you want to read the letter? We have a letter that was submitted.
Yeah, we have a letter here from Jenna Hansen. Bear with me. It's, it's a couple pages. Dear Cedar Woolley, and I'm filling in for Kelly tonight, so that's why I'm reading this. Dear Cedar Woolley City Council Members, I am writing to express my deep concern, frustration, disappointment, and quite frankly disgust regarding the city council's rejection of, to the hiring of Rebecca Lowell. The council has provided with the highly irregular opportunity to interview and meet with an exceedingly qualified candidate who was enthusiastically endorsed by city staff after complaining that they, city council, were left out of the hiring process, even though that is not the role of the city council. It is the administration's role to advertise for all city positions and conduct the interviews, bringing to the city council the best candidate and fit for director and department position. All the directors who have been hired over the last four years were not subjected to the city council interview and the city council confirmed without hesitation those directors are. Kelly Conken, Finance Director, Charlie Bush, City Administrator, Chief McElrath, Police Chief, and Frank Wagner, Fire Chief. However, Rebecca Lowell was denied the opportunity to serve the community due to what appears to be pettiness and political considerations. This flagrant disregard for professionalism, fairness, and the best interest of the community is both disheartening and unacceptable. It is deeply concerning to witness a hiring process tainted by personal grudges and/or political motivations that disregard the qualifications and abilities of a highly qualified candidate. Also by allowing a few individuals within the development community who are also only motivated by their self-interests, self-serving interests. The city council not only fails to fulfill its duty to the residents, but also compromises the overall integrity and effectiveness of the local government. The community deserves leaders who can rise above personal agendas and make decisions based on what is best for the collective well-being of the city, not just a few. It is essential for the city council to remember that the impact of these decisions goes beyond the immediate circumstances. Denying a highly qualified candidate not only undermines the trust and confidence of the public, but also sends a disturbing message to city staff who may question whether their qualifications and accomplishments are valued and recognized by the city's leadership. The duty of the city council is to serve as a representative of the people and make decisions that are driven by merit, expertise, and needs of the community. It is appalling to witness the subversion of these principles in favor of political posturing and personal agendas. The mayor, city administrator, and others, including myself, tried in vain to explain the upcoming challenges with the Growth Management Act and new mandates. The cost of hiring consultants to perform these daunting tasks is great and finding an applicant who has the expertise to do work, is, to do this work is rare, especially for a city such as Cedar Woolley, which offers salaries considerably lower or considerably below what other cities offer. Additionally, the council has frequently commented on the importance of hiring folks from the community. I believe Rebecca checked that box. Now the city will have to broaden its search, which will result in applicants from outside of the area, even out of the state. After city council, after the city council meeting where Rebecca's contract was rejected, a couple of ladies from the community approached me and asked what happened. They were convinced that the city was getting an excellent employee and couldn't understand the council's disregard. They were dumbfounded by the council's actions. I'm sure a few of you have heard from them as they promised to address their council people. I implore all of you to reflect on the principles of fairness, transparency, and the greater good in making decisions of this magnitude. It is the responsibility of the city council to prioritize the well-being of the community and to ensure that the most qualified individuals are selected for crucial positions within your local government. Personal agendas and the agendas of only a few should not be the driving forces in your decision-making. Think about how your actions will affect the overall city, the residents and business people who want to see growth properly managed, processes improved, and to provide better customer service and the existing employees who give so much to the community. The residents of your city and the employees deserve better. Thank you for your attention and I trust that you will carefully consider my concerns, which I know are shared by many. Sincerely, Jenna Hansen.
All right. Thank you, Charlie. So I will open it up to those who may be in the chamber here who want to give public comment. Please give your name and address and keep it two, three minutes. Is there anyone here who would like to give public comment?
Philip Murray, 101 West Woodward Street. And I want to thank Lisa for coming down here and helping the homeless. I wish I could say the same thing for the city because I have seen the city run people out of here, tag their trailers that are parked on city property and with three police officers in the code enforcement. Having them on my property in a trailer, giving them power so they don't freeze and they come after me, just trying to help somebody out. And it's really sickening to watch this happen in this city. The chief of police was there enforcing it and it's just disgusting. Anyway, thank you.
All right. Yes. Come on up.
What's the wrench for in case something happens here and I need you to use it? Dennis O'Neil, this is Dennis O'Neil at 109, 107 Telkot Street. I'm talking in regard to the fireworks that happened. You know, it's every year we have a real problem over on the, what would that be? West Side on Telkot Street. This is the first year I've got to say that I could actually see the next, the street over. They've been really good, the police department. I've had a problem with somebody ringing my doorbell for two and a half years. And these guys, I call them up, they come right over, they're there. I can't imagine how anybody gets out of there quick enough. I never saw the guy or the girl or whatever, but it looks like it might have finally dropped off. But I've got to compliment the police department. I can certainly see that the money spent on more officers has been very helpful. They've been stretched to the end length. I'm sorry that Chuck has a problem. We've had problems on Telkot Street for, forever. I've lived there for 18 years, 19 years. Nobody ever cared enough to take care of it. They're doing it now. I mean, we did not have smoke in our street. You couldn't see, you couldn't see 20 feet in the past. And I'm sorry that Chuck got the overflow this year, but we put up with it for a long time, Chuck, and nobody gave a dang. And now it's, it's being corrected. And when I had a problem with this guy going around, I think it's disappeared now. I think I took care of it, but in a roundabout way. But I just wanted to express the appreciation because they're on the stick. They're doing their job as far as I'm concerned. I have no problem at all what they're doing. I think it's an improvement over what we had in the past, including the need for shooting somebody that runs a, you know, a street block earlier. I don't think that would have happened if we'd had more police officers out there. So I, my hat off to them. I think they're doing a great job. Thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Yes?
Yes?
My name is Dale Irish, and I'm from 7611 Delvin Hill Road. I'm actually here to represent the Lager Rodeo. So mine has been talked about by Councilman Owens and a couple others, but it's about the fireworks. At the Fourth of July, on the parade route, we had had a house at Murdoch and Ferry Street that was lighting mortars every time a horse came by during the parade. It had actually scared the horses. And I was actually afraid of the safety of the attendees to the parade and the horses themselves and the riders. And I was just wondering if, because I saw a post from the Cedar Woolley Police Department, and I was under the understanding that the fireworks were legal between 8:00 AM and 11:00 PM on the Fourth of July. So I didn't think mortar shells were, they were allowed. So I thought they were allowed during that time. So I didn't call or do anything about it. So I was wondering if maybe we could change the code for the fireworks again. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
My name's Alan Henderson, 842 Ferry Street. Chiefs, both of you, your guys' crews, both did a fantastic job through the whole weekend of the Fourth. We set up for a car show down at the Eagles, and we saw you guys around. Everything was great. Mark's not here tonight, so if you could pass on to him about his Public Works crew, they did a fantastic job. All down the parade route, they had garbage cans, and they came back and collected them the next morning. So most of the trash, all down the residential area, was cleaned up. Everything looked great. Also, there's a couple different projects going on for road resurfacing right now, most notably on Ball Street. And the quality of work that they're doing and the timeliness of the project has just been fantastic. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Yes?
I'm sorry. I should have mentioned, though, that I can understand Phil's upset, being upset, but I think he's got to remember that police officers don't go out and do that. They're directed. They got oversight. And I think the person that oversight for the police department might have been contacted and asked why they're doing this and get something, maybe even in writing. Because I doubt very much if they're just going out randomly and doing that. Maybe I'm wrong. I hope not. Thank you again. I appreciate it. Sorry.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to give public comment? Okay. Seeing none, how about online? Is there anybody online who would like to give public comment? All right. Doesn't look like that is the case. So it is 6:52. I'm going to close public comment, and we're going to move right into new business. We do not have any unfinished business tonight, and it looks like it's the pros and cons statement committee appointments. And Charlie, are you covering this?
I am covering this, with Kelly being out tonight. So this evening, we have a potential action item for council. We are requesting action this evening regarding pro and con statement committees and committee appointments for the fire levee lid lift that the council recently placed on the ballot. The way this works is we've been recruiting for these positions, and our recruitment closed at 4:30 yesterday. And that's to put a committee together for each. We can have up to three people on each committee. And so for the for committee, three people responded, and this is posted as late material for the meeting, and you received it by email, but Kendra O'Neill, Jacob Brayton, and Jacob Kelly are those three. And then for the against committee, two people responded, John Dennis O'Neill and Al A. Helge Anderson. So those are the folks that were prepared to submit to the auditor's office. And the way that works is then somebody will become a chair of each of these committees, and they'll work with the auditor's office to create the for and the against statements for submitting to the voters. So it's really just an administrative process, but we need the council's support to help us finish this process so we can get this off to the auditor's office. The deadline is August 1st, and it would be very helpful if we could take action tonight, because our next meeting is on the 26th, and that's cutting it closer than we'd like, especially if the auditor's office has any feedback for us, anything we need to change or do differently.
All right. Thank you, Charlie. Are there any questions or concerns for Charlie? If not, we're looking for a motion.
Madam Mayor, I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Councilman Burns, seconded by Councilman McGoffin, to approve the appointment of the members for the pro/con statement committees. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. All right. Thank you. Motion carries. Moving on to item number two, this is amending the Cedar Woolley Municipal Code Title II, the Administration and Personnel, to add Chapter 2.15, entitled Defense Indemnification. Oh, boy. Had that one, didn't I? Ruined that one. Bonding of the city officials, employees, and volunteers. It's ordinance number 205123. Okay. Nikki?
That'll be me. Thank you. This evening, I'm presenting ordinance 2051-23. And this is intended to add a chapter into Title II, which addresses defense and indemnification of city officials and employees. The RCWs permit municipalities to indemnify and defend their officers and employees when they are acting with the course of their employment. Unfortunately, the Cedar Woolley Municipal Code doesn't have clarification as to what that process looks like in Cedar Woolley. So this ordinance intends to add in that process and identify when it's available and when it's not available, and what the process for denial looks like. This is taken largely from one of our other cities that we represent. Most cities do have indemnification and defense provisions in their code. And so this is just filling a hole that we have identified in Cedar Woolley's code. If you have any specific questions, I'm happy to answer them.
So are there any questions for Nikki? Hearing none, is there a?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion amending Cedar Woolley Municipal Code Title II for the bonding of city officials, employees, and volunteers, ordinance number 2051-23.
All right. Thank you. Do I have a second?
Madam Mayor, I'll second, if.
All right. So we have a motion by Councilman Allen, seconded by Councilman Burns. Is there any more discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay. That is it for our new business. We did have quite a bit of fire information. I don't know, Frank, if you wanted to speak to any of that tonight or just as is?
I think it's, excuse me. I think you'll notice that the numbers are continuing to stay up there in comparison to years past. The information is the same that I put in every month to kind of show the council and folks what we're doing out there. The one thing that I wanted to address was, as we're looking to this levee lid lift, one of the things that we're finding, and I'm going to start adding it to this, is our overlapping calls. And when we're talking overlapping calls, we're, you know, 30 years ago, when I started doing this, we were lucky to have one, well, I say lucky, we would have one call a day at 365 a year, and we slowly got to 1,000, then we slowly got to 2,000. Well, now we're pushing 3,500 plus, and we're going to be knocking on the door of 4,000. And with that, we have, when we have everybody staff, which right now, in your packets every year or your weekly updates, we're showing that we're running between 10 and 100 hours a week sometimes that we're not staffed and we're having to brown out stations, which happens when we're relying mostly on part-timers and volunteers. But with that, sometimes our second and third calls are overlapping to the fact of, of those 3,600 calls almost last year, we were overlapping calls of 37% to 40%. So, meaning every time that first call happens, we're, 35% to 40% of the time, we're having a secondary call as well. So we show that the folks are doing some amazing things out there, like delivering a baby, which we've done, I think, four times this year. The CPRs, the high-acuity heart attacks, the folks that were shipping off in helicopters from, you know, having fireworks blow up in their hands and major car accidents. Those are pretty great accomplishments, the things that these folks are coming in and doing at all hours of the night from home with the volunteers and the part-time staffing and the career folks that we have. But we don't always have that secondary unit available or that third unit available when these overlapping calls are happening. So we're relying on, you know, those folks coming from Mount Vernon and Burlington to help us, which we in turn do for them as well. But just a reminder of how much we appreciate you folks allowing us to move forward with this levee lid lift, and hopefully the voters see that as well. And I want to give a shout out to those same folks as you talk and congratulate and thank us for what we did on the Fourth of July. And it was all them. It wasn't me and Dan, but these folks, they gave up their time on their holidays. Where we used to have 45 to 50 volunteers, we're down to 27, but they all showed up. We fed them a minimal breakfast that morning as kind of a kickoff, and they staffed 11 different apparatus around the parade route so that we could deploy appropriately as needed during that time where we're having, you know, sometimes 25,000, 30,000 extra people in town and all that traffic. And they come in with smiles, they dress up and put the uniform on and do an amazing job. And I just want to reach out and thank them and all their efforts, and thank you for supporting that.
All right. Thank you. Okay. With that, there is nothing left on our agenda. Next meeting is July 26th, two weeks from tonight. With that, everybody have a good night. We are adjourned.